All right, very good. Thank you. All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I'm Commissioner Rozi Parenti.
Tom Turente.
Paul Kaplan.
Kevin Cornell.
Judy Smith.
Jack Demirgin, zoning administrator.
Okay, thank you. Let's get right into our agenda. Item number one is a review of the minutes from the February twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Everybody had a chance to look those over? You're out. Oh, you're, you weren't here for the last meeting. All right. I had a few comments, just mostly like little typos or something. Very first paragraph. My eyes are so bad with these glasses, but is that, does that say July Smith? Instead of Judy Smith? Can't get Judy's name right.
These were consistent. It was Judy Williams in the other minutes, now I'm July.
So July Smith, that's a good new nickname. All right, under old business.
Now it's personal.
Three lines up from the bottom of the paragraph, it was agreed that the Mr. Demirgin. Take the the. Unless that was intentional.
I think I added that, actually.
Last line on the page, zoning materials, I think we should say regulations instead of materials. And then just one other typo on second, full paragraph on the second page, Mr. Brian Cleveland.
Brain is the first one.
Yeah.
We got that.
The other, the next, yeah, next one's fine.
Second, second to last paragraph on page two. July returned.
Oh, I didn't pick up on that one. All right, anything else? If, if not, we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the, the February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three minutes as amended.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and one abstention. Okay. All right, under old business, on our agenda, it's noted ground-mounted solar panel language review.
Everyone should have a copy of our proposed language in their packets, which covers pretty much what we discussed at our last couple meetings about how we want to regulate the solar arrays or renewable energy structures in our residential zone. So if anyone has any comments or questions, this is the language that I'm planning on sending out to the regional planning authorities for review.
So we're gonna put it in the back of the, nothing in the front yard?
Correct.
And is there a size? A size restriction or no?
There's no total size restriction. Any array over three hundred square feet would have to be approved by special permit anyways, so it would have to come in front of the board.
Be a structure no different than a shed, you know, storage shed or whatever.
But it has to be independent of the house. If it's on the house, we're not gonna see it.
That's right. That's the way.
And the percentage of coverage also applies?
Applies, correct. It's just like any other structure.
Everything else applies.
Yep.
Setback requirements.
Absolutely.
Height requirements.
And it's for residential, not commercial arrays?
Correct.
I, I had just one suggestion to make on the language. On subsection si- six.
Yep.
No part of a solar and other renewable forms of energy and energy conservation structure shall be located in a front yard area or in. Then I think the next phrase can come out, I think it's repetitious, in the, the words, the area that is in the area of the parcel that is in front of the primary structure. I think you should just read, "front yard area" or "in front of the primary."
Of the primary structure.
Structure.
The front yard area or in the.
What's the difference?
Do you seem like we had?
No, no, I.
Yeah.
You have two, yeah, your point is well taken, but my question is, do we need that language at all? In other words, if we're saying that it should not be located in the front yard, what's the difference between the front yard and the front and the area?
The area of the parcel that is in front of the primary structure.
I thought he was maybe trying to get at a corner lot or something.
Is that what it is?
But if he's on a corner lot, aren't there two front yards?
I think the intent of that, that language was probably referring to the front portion of the property towards the side yard.
So it'd be one front.
That's the way I interpret it.
Yeah.
So we're talking about one front yard on, even on a corner lot, or is it, does that make a difference? Is that what was for? Because it's not, it's not clear to me, I don't think. Located in the front yard.
It is, it is repetitious. I'm just trying to think if there's a reason Vinnie worded it that way specifically for corner lots.
So let's, let's think about how often that's gonna happen. So you'd have to have a corner lot and have somebody wanna put the array there.
Not, not very often is what you're saying.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to think.
Well, in a corner lot, doesn't one?
One's a front yard.
One becomes a front yard, one becomes a side.
Right, so.
Well, they actually, both street-side property lines would be front yards because they're, they go by the street line. So your other two property lines, assuming this is a square parcel, would be an other property line, which is side.
So instead of saying front yard, why don't we say street line?
Street-side property?
Uh, a street line, and then whether there's one or two street lines.
The only problem, street, a street line may not be defined in the, you know, the front yard is though, right?
I believe it's called the street.
Wouldn't you wanna say, "no portion of the array shall be beyond the front wall of the house"? That way they're kinda bound to keep it back.
Yeah. Yeah, it depends on how you, I mean, does the front yard go from corner to corner and then this side yard goes from the back corner to the, to the street?
I, I mean.
You have a portion there that's both the front yard and the side yard.
I would, I would think that, just from a practical standpoint, you wouldn't put a ground-mounted array where a structure could occlude it during part of the day from the sun's passage. So that's why it's either on the roof or in the front or the back. I mean, if you're in the side, at some point of the day, your array's gonna be in the dark, and if it's right next to the house, why wouldn't you have put it on the roof?
Right. How is front yard defined? I mean, can we get away with just saying front yard?
Yeah.
I don't think we have a front yard.
In the definitions section, there's none.
I don't think we have a front yard definition here.
Is there a definition of the front of the house? That area in front of the house?
How can we have a front yard setback if we don't know what a front yard is?
Well, it's, our regs refer to it as the street line, the street-side property.
So then let's. Yeah, so let's call it.
Let's call it that then.
So let's call it that.
Yeah.
I like how we go in circles.
Making legislation.
Yeah, very logically, very good.
So how did, how do they define street yard or street side?
No building or other structure shall extend within the minimum distances of any street line, rear property line, or other property line. So that's how we define them. It's street, rear, and other for side and.
And street is?
Street is, is your, on your standard lot, your front property line. Your property line that runs parallel to a street. Doesn't necessarily have to be the street you live on, because if you live on a corner lot, you have two street lines. So street line is what we use for our definition of that property line. I don't think we have a definition of.
But it doesn't.
Front yard.
It doesn't define it in relation to the location of the house?
No.
Well, you could have a sidewinder house. Where your door's facing the side.
Yeah, I haven't seen many of those in orange things.
That's true.
Yeah. We don't have a lot of them here, but you could have a very convoluted.
Just read it to me again, I'm sorry.
Uh, back up here. So no building or other structure shall, shall extend, this is just our general setback rules, within less than the minimum distances of any street line, rear property line, or other property line, or residence district boundary within the specified district.
So if you go to the resident.
So if you go to the residential district zone.
Mm-hmm.
Both requirements. And it has setbacks.
Yep.
What do they call them?
Street line, rear property line, and other property.
Okay, so why don't we write, "street line setback"?
That works for me.
No structures in the street line setback, no.
Well, that's different than the front yard, because let's say you have a house that's two hundred feet from your, your front, your street line.
Yeah.
And you only need to be fifty feet away, that's your, your building setback. So we need to, we need to include language about the primary dwelling, because that is what is, we're gonna be able to use for a backyard.
And what is the?
These are pretty basic questions, I guess, but what constitutes a front yard? Is it out of your front door? Does every house have a front door? I think so.
I would, I would say yes.
They may not use it.
Well, we know what we're talking about when we talk about a.
Front yard.
Fifty-foot setback.
Mm-hmm.
In front, right? It's from, it's measured from the.
Straight.
The house or any.
From the property line.
Yes.
Yeah, but, right.
Doesn't have anything to do with the setback, it has to do with the front yard.
Right, exactly.
If you say front yard, it's much more expensive.
You could have.
You can't build the house inside that fifty-foot setback.
Right, but let's say someone has their house two hundred feet back from that front street line.
Yeah.
If we don't say, it has to be behind the primary dwelling, we can't just use that fifty-foot setback, because some of these places.
Yeah.
Might have ample room in the front of their house.
Okay, so that, that explains why it's written the way it is.
Yeah, definition.
Right, right.
Defines it a little.
Right.
More clearly.
Yeah, so he's defining what that front area is.
Yeah. The only way for us to do that.
The parcel that is in front of the primary structure.
Just.
Leave it the way it is?
No, take out that repetitious language.
Okay.
So, so it says, "shall be."
Shall be located.
Shall be located in a front yard area or in front of the primary structure. I mean, that's, that is what we were trying to get at.
Yeah, it was.
We didn't want it out in the front yard.
Right.
Or you could put, or you could put between the primary structure and the street line. The area between the primary structure and the street line.
The, because the street line means the front.
Right. Well, it means the street, and we only care about how this looks from the street, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Sadie, do you wanna?
So we, what our object, our, our concern is how things look from the street to everyone who's passing by.
Yeah.
Whether a person considers that the front of their house or not is irrelevant to what we don't want Pete to be looking at. So.
Well, they can't decide on what they want the front, I mean, the front yard is.
No, but they might not consider it the front of their house, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay, so if it's, if we're saying, the, you know, so if my house is oriented, so my front door faces what we would consider the side yard, you know, I would consider what's outside my front door to be my front yard, in just common terms, not legal terms. So, so if we use the legal term, "street line," to, the area between the street line and the primary residence, that, you know, is what we would consider what fronts the road.
All right, then that's, could conceivably take up part of the side yard too as well.
Oh, so does the.
Right.
But so does the front yard.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they're both, I, I think they're both pretty close in terms of meaning.
Yeah. Any area in front of the structure?
Primary structure.
Or any area between a street line and the primary structure?
Right.
Right.
Yes, okay. Between a street line. And again, we, we can still dock this up. This is just for referral, and then, once we get the referrals back and we actually review it.
All right.
We can change the wording here.
Why don't you have Vinnie take a quick look at it too, just to, because we don't know, you know, it's hard to know exactly what he had in mind.
Will do, yep.
All right, good. Okay, anything else under old business?
Well, she's not old business, but how's Tammy?
She's doing well.
Okay, good.
Better.
Sorry.
All right, anything else? No? Okay, how about under new business? No, okay. Then, Jack, do you have a report for us?
Uh, the only thing I have is, in the next probably two meetings, we'll be going over some proposed language that was brought forth by an applicant regarding outdoor storage and displays. The language would allow for a larger portion of their sidewalk to be utilized for display in sales in the C-one and the C-two zone. So in the next few weeks, we'll be looking at that.
The sidewalk.
Correct. Which is what we are current language outlines as the area to be used for outdoor storage and displays.
Okay.
And we limit the frequency.
Right, we limit frequency, the amount of space that could be taken up by these displays, and this applicant is asking for a larger capacity.
He's asking, do we change the regulation?
Correct, it's a regulation amendment.
Okay. All right, then, next item is item five, bond release request, one ninety-seven Indian River Road. Jack, you wanna walk us through that?
Sure. So one ninety-seven Indian River, I'm sure everyone has seen it up on the hill, across from the Christmas tree shops. The Varro of Orange is soon to be open. They're working out a couple last-minute things with the electrical inspector, with the building department, as well as the health department. But they did request their bond back. Their site work is all completed. Both myself and the engineer have driven up and down the site, made sure everything fits with the plans, received our as-bills. The only thing that I do wanna keep is their landscaping portion of the bond. During the winter, it's obviously tough to make sure all plantings and landscaping have taken and will remain, and especially with those steep slopes that are on that property, I wanna make sure grass and everything is taken before we take, you know, any of our S and E controls fully away. But other than that, that's really the only outstanding work to be done on the property.
So you, it's the work that's identified in this quote?
Right, this is the original quote that they got from their landscaper, and while not one hundred percent of it is needed, I think if we keep a hundred thousand dollars of the bond, we also have an additional ten thousand dollar cash bond on top, so we will still be holding a total of a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
But this work is in place.
Right, it's all in place, but.
It's done, other than that you can't confirm.
Exactly, right, and I wanna make sure everything takes before we give everything back, in case we have erosion problems or things like that.
Is the hundred thousand or a hundred and ten thousand sufficient in case it didn't?
Yes, I, more than sufficient, I would say so.
And we've done this before with other projects.
Partial release.
Some evergreen, some died, and we go to the bond to replace it.
Do we usually take some kind of cushion, though, on?
Well, we will still have it, so once, once, if we were to decide.
Something over, I mean, I guess the, the, the whole thing would have to fail.
Right.
Right, yeah, we don't keep a huge portion. I think if you're, if you have a subdivision and there are roads involved, I think there might be a provision that we keep like ten percent of it for the next year. But with this, this is just a, you know, for the site.
You're suggesting holding back a hu, holding a hundred of it?
Holding a hundred, yeah, I think that's a, that would be sufficient.
Doomsday scenario.
Correct, that would be sufficient.
For landscaping.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah, other than that, I.
There's nothing else that needs.
Everything else is done.
The bond secures no other work.
Correct. The other work that is outlined in the bond has been completed, in my opinion.
Before this place is open?
They're open.
They're open now?
They were open two months ago.
Really?
Yeah, they're, they're.
And they've got people in and everything?
Sold out, from what I understand. Well, I shouldn't say that, but I know that they have had a lot of interest, and they're waiting to get people in there. They're just waiting on those last few things from the health department and the electrical inspector.
You need a motion?
We could, yeah, we could entertain a vote.
What are we gonna, what are you suggesting?
I would suggest that we retain a hundred thousand dollars of the bond for landscape contingencies, but the rest of the bond be released.
Which would be ten of the cash bond and ninety?
No, we're gonna retain.
No, the cash bond would be separate. So in total, we'll have a hundred and ten thousand dollars between both, but the one that we're looking at today, the three million and change, we're only keeping a hundred thousand dollars of that.
All right.
I'll move that we, you okay?
The other thing I was gonna ask, do any municipal, other municipal department heads have to?
No, I, I checked with them to make sure that they were all set with it. Other than those small outstanding issues, I think everyone's given the go-ahead.
All right, yes, then we'll.
I'll move that we release the surety bond in connection with the one ninety-seven Indian River Road in Orange, Connecticut. It's bond number four-two, B as in boy, S as in Sam, B as in boy, I E four-five-one-four, in the original amount of three thousand, three million ninety-six thousand seven hundred eleven dollars, down to one hundred thousand dollars.
And, and retain the cash bond in place?
Correct.
Ten thousand dollars.
Do I have to add that or not?
No, you, you don't, because it wasn't even requested here.
Okay. We have a motion to reduce the bond. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, plus or minus.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, good. All right, on to the public hearings portion of our meeting. Item number six on our agenda is an application for special exception, special exception permit or use submitted by Brian Cleveland Architects. This is for two hundred Indian River Road to operate a retail store under three eighty-three ninety A of the regulations. Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, legal notice, please.
Yeah.
To appear one time on Thursday, February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, and one time on Thursday, March second, two thousand and twenty-three, the Orange TPZC Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven P M. at the Orange Town Hall, six seventeen Orange Center Road, the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission will conduct a public hearing on the following: Application for a Special Exception Permit or Use submitted by Brian Cleveland Architects for the property known as two hundred Indian River Road to operate a retail store under section three eighty-three dash nine zero A of the Orange zoning regulations. A copy of this notice has been filed in the, with the Orange Town Clerk. Additional information is on file in the Orange zoning department, dated in Orange, Connecticut, this twenty-second day of February two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, thank you, Paul. The applicant.
All right, good evening. I am Brian Cleveland of Brian Cleveland Architects, here on behalf of Crazy Hot Deals, who is looking to move into a roughly sixty-three hundred square foot retail space at two hundred Indian River Road, the Christmas Tree Shop Plaza. This is a retail establishment that will be selling goods that they actually get from consignment, basically, from other big. from, uh, consignment, basically, uh, from other big retailers that get returns. And they sell them, uh, resell them at a discounted price. Um, this establishment would be closed on Thursdays, that is their restocking day. They are open every other day of the week, um, from approximately 10 until 7. That's at least what they do in their Manchester location. Um, it certainly will never go past 9 o'clock. It's a normal retail establishment here. Um, again, it is approximately 6,300 square feet, so out of the 822 parking spaces that we have on this site, uh, they will require approximately 24 spaces per the parking regulations. Uh, they are currently not looking at doing any exterior renovations to the location, except for coming in for a sign application at some later date, uh, for their own use. They do have a loading dock at the rear of their location, which will, they will use to bring goods in and out of the location, so goods will not need to come in and out through the front door. That will just be for the customers. Loading dock here with the stairs and coming off the back. And their primary entrance here. This has a fairly large facade off of the front of it and also a side facade. So again, there might be two locations where they might come in for a sign. There were two signs associated with this particular location previously.
What, what is the, what was the previous, uh, previous use?
I don't remember.
Yeah, this building.
It's, it's vacant now.
It is vacant now, yes.
Might have even been vacant before too, for a while.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not where we approved the swimming.
No.
No. Yep. Which I don't think is going in anymore, so.
So, um, it, it's basically a very complimentary use. It's retail use in a retail, um, shopping center. So there shouldn't be any problems with the use coming in here, um, and are looking for your approval and can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Beyond ample parking.
I would say so, yeah.
And I, I wasn't on the board when the Christmas tree shop was done, but this is, the only reason we're even seeing this is that we're in an LI, um.
LI three zone, yeah. Where retail is by special permit.
So all retail?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, just like the one we approved.
Just last, meant last meeting.
That escaped.
He was even up there too.
Okay.
Mr. Brain.
You're, you're representing the landlord or the tenant?
I'm representing the tenant, um, albeit we had to get landlord approval in order to make the application.
Anybody?
Straight forward.
Anybody in the audience wish to comment on the application? No? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Okay, uh, we have a motion to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all right. I, I can't think of any conceivable issue that would be, you know, a problem on this. I mean, it's a special permit application, so you technically need to make findings that it's, you know, it's, you know, uh, doesn't adversely affect property values. There's no particular traffic concern or, or parking concern that we have to worry about. It's harmonious with other uses in the neighborhood. Uh, having approved, what was it, the, the, um?
Last week.
Yeah.
Escapeology.
Escapeology. Uh, this is even more in conformance.
Retail use in a retail zone.
Yeah, so, well, it's not a retail zone, but it's permitted.
Retail shopping center.
I see no problem with it.
No.
Anybody?
I will make a motion that we approve the application submitted by Brian Cleveland Architects for property known as 200 Indian River Road to operate a retail store under section 383-90A of the Orange zoning regs.
All right, we have a motion to approve the application. Second. Second by Commissioner Tarenti. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, unanimous. All right, thank you.
Two for two.
Yes.
All right, final item on the agenda this evening. A petition to amend the Orange zoning regulations. This is, uh, submitted on our own initiative to amend section 38319A5 uh, of the regulations to limit the number of cannabis establishments in town. Paul, do you want to read the legal notice on this one?
Yes, two seconds.
To appear one time on Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023, and one time on Wednesday, March 1st, 2023. The Orange TPZC, uh, Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, March 7th, 2023, at 7:00 PM at the Orange Town Hall, 617 Orange Center Road. The Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission will conduct a public hearing on the following. A petition to amend the Orange zoning regulations submitted upon the initiative of the Town of Orange Planning and Zoning Commission to amend section 383-19A subsection 5 of the Orange zoning regulations to limit the number of cannabis establishments. A copy of this notice has been filed with the Orange Town Clerk. Additional information is on file in the Orange Zoning Department, dated in Orange, Connecticut, this 21st day of February, 2023.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Has everybody had a chance to, uh, take a look at this language?
I just have one question. What's the word, operation, operational?
Exactly the question I had. Yeah, I, I don't know what.
Why don't we just put, shall be permitted?
Exactly. Do you, were you looking at my notes? No, I, I think permitted is, is better. I don't know how we would necessarily define.
Yeah, I think that's a better word as well.
Short and sweet.
But subject to that change, I think it accomplishes what we set out to do.
So, so Judy had an interesting comment to me before about this, because when, uh, cannabis was originally going to be allowed in the state of Connecticut by the, or, or, or operation of the statute, we were only ever gonna have one here.
Based on.
Based upon populations. And that was their statute.
And that was their statute. That got changed, so.
That section got deleted, I think.
Right, right. So, so we're really just going back to that original intent, but the question came up. Is there any other type of use in this town where we only have or feel that we can only have one?
So you answered this question?
Not where we're gonna.
We have an answer to this question?
I do not have an answer to the question, because it's, you know, it, it, they, it, it came up in sort of a discussion of, you know, we're just resetting a clock, the clock to the original rules under which we adopted the cannabis regulations.
Right, because.
Right.
Because we knew we were only gonna have one.
Because we only knew, right.
The only use that comes to mind that we would only have one of is the Community Travel Center and Electric Vehicle Showroom. Because the parameters to meet those special permits were pretty specific to one location or area of town, so typically, so I doubt we would have more than one of those any, if, if at all, at any point, because we simply lack the parcels that meet the parameters of that special permit.
Is that, is that true of the hotel on the corner as well?
Um, I don't think hotels would be.
Because we have one across the street.
But we don't.
But it, but it's, the, the location, the, the.
Precludes others.
Right.
Right, by definition, right, but we don't have language this specifically that says, only one.
What kind of other use? I'm just trying to figure out the parameters of the question.
Package store or something like.
Well, the reason, the reason behind the question is probably more important, which is I, I assume we're allowed to do this. That it's not a, some sort of. Yeah.
I, I raised that question with the self-storage application, and I got shut down pretty quickly.
Well, that, that. Well, that's because the, the language sort of effectively does it, but it doesn't do it on its face.
Quite, yeah, quite as blatantly. But I.
Well, the, the storage can only be done in that particular location. No other location qualifies.
Same with the Community Travel Center.
Right.
Right.
And Vinny was aware of us looking at this language. He didn't raise any, any issues.
Unless it's in contravention of an area that the state has legislated in, I don't think we have a, an objection, assuming this is what our intent is.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, if, if your question is, do we have any other things in town that we want to prohibit or limit?
No.
No, do we have any other uses that we have this similar language for? And the answer is no.
I don't know of any.
You're worried about the enforceability.
But, but we have, but we have certain things that we do have.
Certain things that we do, yeah, that we don't allow. Like here, we don't allow commercial kennels, piggeries and, and mink farms, you know, we don't allow those at all.
Well, but we also have very strict parameters for alcohol, um, uh, package stores. It's gotta be 1,500 feet away from here and.
And the adult store.
If we're that concerned about it, we could always change the language. Say you could only have one every 10,000 feet or whatever.
There are additional parameters we could put on.
Yeah, and, and in fact, that's what I had originally tried to.
With your thousand foot.
With, yeah, with, with the 1,500 feet.
Right.
And I said, just make it simple. So now that we've made it simple, and by the way. I don't want to deal with more than one of these. That was enough.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm happy to, you know, support this. I just thought it might be, since we had nothing else going on tonight, we could talk about.
So, if it hasn't stepped in to.
There's no contradictory state language that would.
Yeah, I think we're on firm.
Prohibit or prevent us from doing this.
All right. Then I'm happy as a.
So the, uh, that is the only location, you know, the, the one we approved. That's it. And how, how could it, how could that?
Well, not by definition. So say they opted not to go there, but chose another site, they would still be the only one. But they are not bound to that site.
Right, and once they abandon that site.
They can go anywhere retail.
Are they or anyone else?
Is there's no special permit that carries over with respect to that site. In other words.
No, it's their approval.
So if some, if they went out, if, if they decided not to move in and operate the business there, somebody could identify a spot somewhere else in town.
Right.
Right. If they met the parameters of the special permit.
Would that, would, would that be us, uh, you know, permitting two separate locations then?
Well, they.
Not according to this.
Yeah.
If the first, only one at a time.
Yeah.
Right, and it, and because you, this is actually.
What I'm saying is, we, we permitted.
Right, that's why changing operational to permitted is, is a good idea.
Right.
Because they are permitted. They just have to meet the conditions of that permit that were laid out.
Right.
So they're already permitted.
Yeah.
You know, they, they just have to meet.
So we could not approve another location at this point.
Correct, uh, well, once, once this language goes into effect.
If they abandoned the idea of going there, right?
Right.
Then, then it's.
The town's open again.
Town's open again. And the fact that there's a special permit, uh, that we granted with respect to that property is irrelevant.
Well, it's with that application, that, that applicant.
Which is now finished it under your hypothetical.
Yeah, I mean, the, the approval goes with the applicant, not with the parcel.
Correct.
I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Yep.
All right. Is there any comment from the public on the, uh, application? Yes, sir? Can you come to the podium, please?
Thank you. Uh, Ron Kaye 90 Hall Drive.
Could you spell your last name for me?
K A Y E.
Thank you very much.
I've been living in Orange for two years. I think it's a wonderful community. Um, but my number one question about the town is it's almost impossible for the citizenry to know what's going on. Um, the published agendas don't have links to the documents. I asked Mr. Dimirjin, and he sent me the, uh, two items, six and seven, so that I could understand what's, what they proposed. But throughout all the city business, it's kind of private. Like I'm the only public person who's here watching what's going on, and, um, I have a question to. I've talked to the people, the, the manager of the, uh, medical marijuana facilities, uh, been let go. And nobody in the staff there has any clue as to whether they're ever gonna revive the renovation and operation of the current site that's approved. So it would appear that the restrictions, and you seem to sort of understand that, the restrictions have queered the deal of them coming here.
I, I would contradict that. I, I just spoke with the applicant today.
Yeah.
They're very much moving forward with putting together a plan and, and going to that location.
Well, that's interesting. And, and, but, but I also hear there's, is there a comprehensive theory? I know some people object on some moral grounds, but it's probably worth a million dollars a, a shop in revenue to the city that is, costs nothing. I mean, there's literally dozens and dozens of alcohol establishments, including Fridays, where people beat the hell out of each other and have cheap liquor and, and beer and, 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 um, huge amounts of portions of food, as they did last Thursday. And, um, nobody seems to be bothered by alcohol, which does presumably lead to more violence than cannabis. And so I'm just curious what the theory is. The law no longer requires that you only have one. And, and, and I don't care whether you have one or none at this point. Um, I'm just curious what, as I've gotten interested in the town and how it operates, is what's the theory of what you're doing in managing the issue of legalized marijuana?
Yeah, yes, you, you can, if you want to also address the notice part of things as well, because I, you know, I think that needs to be cleared up.
So let's, let's do the notice part first. Um, it always hurts us as a, as a board to think that we're doing something, um, that the town doesn't know about, because, um, you know, we're on camera, obviously, in OGAAT.
Yeah.
But your question is actually preliminary, which is, hey, before you get to the meeting, should there be a, a methodology of, uh, you know, finding out what's on the agenda? I think it's a fair question. And I'm looking to my zoning enforcement administrator, can we figure out a way to get the agenda, once it's set, onto the website, I guess, is where we'd go.
I post them every, every meeting.
All right, so that's your answer.
Well, it's also posted in Town Hall.
Right.
And you can get on an email list.
Right, but the main thing is that, that, that presupposes people have access, meaning they can actually physically have access. The website is the one where you can go on to and actually look at it. Um, so that's your answer to the immediate question of.
You can always get the agenda online.
Get the agenda.
Agenda, it says to reach out to my office.
Oh, he wants the actual application.
Document behind it.
You don't get.
The ordinance in this case that you sent to me is far, is clearer than what the agenda item is.
Right, so the agenda is there to tell you what we're discussing, and then if you want additional information or material, you reach out to my office and I provide it, as we did.
Well, what I don't understand is I've worked, I'm a journalist for a long, long time. I've worked a lot of places. And most of those places, in this day and age, you simply click on the agenda item, and then the document behind it comes up. It's very, actually, it's a link that's widely used in almost every business. And, 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 and I guess what I'm advocating for is, is if you really want the town to know what's going on, and it's not just this, it's the whole town. And I, I've gotten really interested in how Orange works. And, and that to me seems like a simple, non-cost item of using an agenda that has links to the documents behind it.
I can explore putting the, the relevant material to our meeting on there as well.
That would be, I think, an advance in anybody in the community being able to quickly get, you get your agendas, I get all your agendas and.
That's a good idea, yeah. The public is, is better, if we can figure out how to do it.
But the way that happens, like when I would do, uh, applications out on Long Island or in, like Philadelphia, you'd, you, when you file documents with the town as an applicant, you'd also have to give them electronic documents.
On the applicant.
So you put the burden on the applicant to have, for example, this site plan.
Right.
So the, the only, so otherwise to create. So the, the only, so otherwise to create a type of link with documentation.
We can't do that.
Bringing up.
Manpower.
Yeah.
We don't have the manpower.
Right.
So.
We hired somebody deficient. I get it.
Strong words.
Yeah.
But, so that is the way it was accomplished in other jurisdictions that I've had.
So we'd have to change the filing requirements.
If you want to make it easy.
Yeah.
And I do, I digitize all of this myself anyways. Typically, the applicants do provide electronic copies, but I always scan and digitize everything myself to make sure that I have it. And it's, it's just easier for me to refer back to on my computer.
Right.
Rather than every time I get a phone call asking about an application, I go get the file. I just pull it up right on my computer right there. So I have everything digitized there, and I'd be happy to include it with our agendas.
So by the way, this would have been better in new business, but thank you.
Yeah.
I, I don't know the process. I do love living here in the town. But I think it would all be better if people regularly had easy access to what's going on. Because it seems, my impression of the town is it's kind of a private business in which the small numbers of people really pay attention. And, and it's still being, I mean, in my opinion, it's still sort of like a farm town when it's really semi-rural suburban and people who only, you know, aren't as interested in rotary and the bulldozer, tractor pull, and stuff like that. But that's just my suggestion.
No, I appreciate the suggestion, and I, and I think we'll try to.
I think it would be great, and I thank you very much for your time.
If I could just address one thing with regard to the tax generation. Under eight dash three of the Connecticut general statutes, we are charged with the land use regulation. Tax generation is not anything we are to consider.
I, I understand that, but there'd be no way in looking at a cannabis shop if you saw what's going on at the one in New Haven that had such long lines that they've now moved from one location to a much larger one at Amity Plaza because the demand in this day and age is tremendous and the revenue generation, the tax of what, twenty-five percent or something, provides a lot of money that, you know, if it was me, I'd say it should go in a special fund that provided, like, special benefits in addition to the normal budgeting instead of just being thrown into a lump. But that's my opinion. Anyway, thank you all.
Thank you.
You're wel, you're welcome. That's a good suggestion. And the other thing is, I mean, you know, the applications are available in person.
Absolutely.
So you could always.
Yeah, I encourage people to reach out. I'd be happy to send you whatever, whatever material you'd like.
Come to Town Hall.
The only thing I worry about is people who are not ambulatory. It's hard for them to get around.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just pointing out that it is there.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you can get to it. Was there a second part to your?
I was going to respond to Mr. Kay's comment as to how we came to only want one rather than more. And I think from, and I was only going to speak for myself at this point, was I, I kind of want to see what the, how we, you know, how we get, how it operates and do this as a test case. So it wasn't any rocket science from my standpoint. It was just, this is new to us. We understand we have a lot of packet, several package stores in town. We know how they operate. We understand that the traffic pattern is much better. With regard to the cannabis store, this is kind of uncharted territory. At the time when we dealt with the application, and there were numerous people on both sides, well, numerous people against it who articulated. Yeah, no, no, we get that, and we were sensitive to their, we were sensitive and listened to what they had to say. At the same time, I, I, I think I'd like to see how this operates. We weren't able to see how it was operating in New Haven at the time. That this, our hearings preceded all that. They were approved but hadn't yet opened. So, so that's the only reason from my standpoint that I'm happy to limit it to one, and we'll see how it goes.
I think that makes sense.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, any, any other comment from the public? Okay, hearing none, then is someone prepared to move that we close the public hearing?
I am. Move that we close the public hearing.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, public hearing's closed. Again, I think we've got what we're looking for with that one change we suggested. I'm prepared to put it to a vote.
I just want to remind everyone with their vote to have an effective date as well.
Do you have that one in mind?
Sure, we could do Monday, March thirteenth.
Move that we approve the, uh-oh, hang on. The petition to amend the Orange zoning regulations submitted by us to amend section three eighty-three dash nineteen A subsection five of the cannabis, of the Orange zoning regulations to limit the number of cannabis establishments with an effective date of March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Hi, we have a.
As amended.
As amended.
We have a, a motion to approve the application, the petition. We have an effective date of the amendment. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Very good. That concludes our agenda.
Move to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.